Every time we minister, a part of it, "Jesus Christ, I perceive that virtue has gone out of me." It takes something out of you. Now, all giving, what happens? See, you receive back again. So the more you minister, the more of whatever you're giving out comes back, the more... Because you've got to get blessed in the love of God, the renewed manifestation. The giver has to benefit, always has to benefit. But it does take imparting something of your... You are giving your life out. That is correct, whatever that means. But you are. It isn't... When you teach and you pour your heart and life out, it's giving something out. You are putting it out. Virtue, it's not drain, that's not the right word. But it's, "I perceive that virtue has gone out of me," Jesus Christ said. There is, in ministering, a giving out of yourself. Develop to the utmost your service in love for others rather than yourself. See, you are giving out. Now, of course, the more you give out, the more God can fill you with. And the capacity to give increases. So every time we minister, every time we... It should just be that there's an intensity level, there's a push, there's a believing for it to be better and 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 sharper and sharper and sharper. At least until the point that you know, 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 that you know. In ministering healing, you are not going to miss anything. You're going to hit everything. And this person is going to get healed as it is possible to get when you get through ministry. There's no area where you're afraid to talk about this, or you're afraid that that might not happen, or you go on, "Should I have said that? Or was that really..." All that, it's just, "As he, the man, wills." What's that verse? 1 Corinthians 12:11. "But these all work at that one and the selfsame spirit, dividing to every man severally, as he will." Well, you heard it once, why?
Oh, we're familiar with it a lot. It's been in the foundational class.
Wow, so, "Man, oh, man, oh, man." In that book, Power of Will, again, it's just a thought process, a tremendous believing thing. But he talks about, you know, put your whole soul into your eyes when you're looking. Put your whole soul into your hearing, or your will, he uses will. Put your whole will into whatever it is when you're doing it. Your ears, if you're listening, your eyes, if you're seeing, you know. Your smell, if you're smelling, your taste, if you're tasting. Put your whole... It's that, develop that service until your whole everything at that moment is in whatever it is you're doing. That is why, gosh, see? That's why Dr. Earl said, "I do one thing at a time." Because now, if you're doing two things at a time, you're multitasking. At best, you're half-hearted in both things. At best. Most people don't even have that ability, even be half-hearted. See? They would be a tenth in this and a tenth in that, and thinking about how mean it is if they're doing two things at once. When in reality, they're not even doing one thing. This is why releasing, working with God, is doing one thing at a time. Well. That's why, how we got here. Remember, we're workers together with God. What a glorious privilege. Why not release the power of God that is latent within you and believe God for the abundance of His promise? And then it says, "He will do exceeding abundantly above all that we ask or think, but only to the degree that we what?" That we manifest the internal potential power. Only to the degree, and that degree manifests is based on the degree that we will do. So what degree can you do if you're thinking about five different things? Martha, Martha, you are cumbered about many things. Remember that was distracted? When we worked that distraction thing? Remember that now? How all these things get involved? Hey, distraction can lead to bitterness. Think that through. Since you're not focused, you don't get anything done. Others do, and now you're bitter at them because they, instead of being distracted, were focused. Well, that's not an easy thing to do, but I'm going to try it. With God's help, according to God's Word, I'm going to get out of this prison. But if within half an hour, you have forgotten to keep your thinking changed, you'll be back in your old negative rut. Then don't wonder why you can't get an answer to prayer. Why the answer's not flowing as easily for you, for you as it is for... There comes bitterness. There comes envy, there comes greed, there comes all this stuff. There, because you're distracted. You did it for a day. Then you did it for a week. Then you did it for a month. Then you did it for a whole year, but it still was a few months away. You quit. The other person hung in. They've got whatever it is they have, and you don't. And you feel like you deserve it. Well, you're full of shit. You don't deserve squat because you didn't keep your picture in focus long enough. And then you're bitter at the person that did. There it is. There it is. Well, is there a better choice than bitterness?
Sure.
Change. So now get the picture back in focus and get to work again. Change your thinking and your situation. Okay, that's all I got to share this morning. Unless you guys have something you'd like to share to put on tape? Off tape, on tape? Talking about you. If you were wondering, what do they want to do off tape? They're talking about me. You're right, we are. Thinking that's because you're bitter. Doki doki. It's going to be wild how we got to this point when I'm talking about right now. But first of all, let me say that this is July 27, 2003. And we have in attendance with us?
Chuck.
Elizabeth.
Ooh, Elizabeth.
My goodness.
Evelyn.
Frankie.
Anthos.
And your little old...
Birthday boy.
Your little old birthday boy, me. We were talking about just getting in our minds that if God says something, it must be available, even if we don't know how to do it yet. That's okay. Remember the picture? You select what you want in your picture, not you select how you're going to have it. See the difference? This is what stops us, Frankie. When we were kids, we were talking about... I've been talking about this for a while. I've been on this concept of thought, Frankie, for probably 10 years. Why is it that you're in high school even? It's different now in high school. But when I was in high school, when we were graduating, it was like you had the whole world before you. And you could just do anything, and you could be anything, and you had these dreams and goals, right? And you were gonna, "What are you going to do? I'm going to be an actress. I'm going to be a movie star." "Wow, that's cool, what are you going to do?" "I'm going to be an engineer." "What are you going to do?" "I'm going to be, I'm going to sing." "What are you going to do? I'm going to do this, I'm going to do that." And everyone has all these dreams and goals. Was it still that way in your high school, Evelyn?
Yeah.
Yes, of course. You're still? As it gets a little different now in other lives, man, you know.
Now, I've been in school 15 years.
Yeah, I don't know what they're in.
Even in the yearbook, they used to write underneath their pictures what they were going to be.
Right.
Yeah. Now, it's a little different. But, but even for adults. So what happened, Betty, after high school? Something? Oh, there's a great song out. The reason I don't play it is because I don't have another song to state just the opposite. But it's a song out, a country song called, "Life Happens." And this lady was the greatest singer in high school, and she just was great. And next thing you know, she's got, you know, 10 kids in her house. And she's, you know, it's a struggle and it's challenging. And so someone said, came back and said, "You know, you were going to be a great singer. What, you know, what happened?" And she said, "Life happens. I met this guy, we fell in love, and next thing you know, 10 babies later, and I never got to be a singer. But, you know, I sing occasionally at some school. And then someone else is going to be this and going to be that, and they didn't do it. What happened? Life happens," they say, right? Truth is, they just get in bondage. But I'm here to tell you that God wants you free because He says you can be free, and free indeed. So whatever life happened to you or to me can be overcome. But that's what happens. Things, you start having to pay bills. You know, you don't realize that getting that new car means bills. And paying those bills means work. And they want you to work consistently so you can pay consistently. So pursuing that dream becomes a little more difficult because you've got to pay. Or the kids show up, or the guy that you marry doesn't end up being the neatest guy, or the woman that you marry doesn't end up being the neatest woman, or the kids have some challenges. One of them is a special needs kid. So now you've got to work 16 hours a day to take care of him. Or with my mom, you know, she got a divorce early, and she had me. So to provide something nice for me, she worked to have her own home and all this. She worked 16 hours a day as a private duty nurse for nursing homes and all this kind of stuff. 16 hours a day so I could have a good shot at it. Life happens. She'd wanted to go on a road trip, she said, years ago. I don't know how many, maybe 20 years ago, and she didn't get to go. And now, with this road, and she called it an evangelistic road trip. With this road trip, she goes, "Boy, I wanted to go years ago, and I didn't go, and I'm going now." And I think that's kind of cool because she's free to go now. But something happens in our minds and in our lives where we don't get pictures like we used to. We don't have those pictures. We don't dream anymore for stuff. We want to, and then we go, "Well, but there's no way that could happen." Condos. See, we look at condos on the ocean, and we don't go, "Well, that's what I want. That's, I'm going to get a condo," we go. "Boy, those people have a lot of money. I don't have a lot of money, so I can't get a condo like that." Forget all that, put it in your picture. Miracles happen every single day. Wonderful things happen every single day. Impossible. For a plain yellow pumpkin to become a golden carriage, impossible. For a plain country pumpkin to become a girl in marriage. And for white mice, for white horses, such father-rah, steadily be of courses. Impossible. Well, the world is full of Zanies and fools who won't believe in sensible rules, who won't believe what sensible people say. And if all those drove until the idylls keep dreaming, that's impossible, hope's impossible. Things are happening every day.
Bravo.
Thank you very much. But right, they are. And why wouldn't they happen to you? They could. Why? Because you're God's child. You're the child of the miracle-working God. You're a miracle. And you live in the realm of miracles, and you're supposed to be one of those miracle-doers. That's your Father. He's a miracle worker. He does the impossible every day. What about you? See, go back to having those pictures. Sometimes we have to tell people when we're dealing with them in business, "Yeah, but what if that wasn't an issue?" See, people will go, "Well, but, you know, I'd have to talk to so-and-so." So one of the sales techniques is, "Okay, but what if you didn't have to talk to so-and-so? Would you do it?" "Well, yes, if I didn't have to talk to so-and-so." You got, and you have to work with your mind to get your mind to allow yourself to think in terms of what you want. Instead of what you don't think you can get, what you don't want, and all the other stuff. Allow your mind to think in terms of what you want. A 70-year-old man went up in space not that long ago. Was it John Glenn? I forget which one it was.
John Glenn.
John Glenn went up in space. How in the world... It took the best, the most fit, the most whatever, whatever, whatever to do that. You know, out of all the population, here's a guy. So how can you say that I'm too old? You can't. Well, you could, but it would be a lie for most things. How can you say I'm too young? When 18-year-old kids own multimillion-dollar businesses. When I met a guy who's not, he's 30, earning $60,000, $60,000 to $68,000 a week. And I found out from Lee afterwards that he lied. He owns, he's earning $80,000 a week, net. Impossible? No, no way. What's the difference? Is he smarter than you? Well, we'd like to think that. Well, see, it's his programming. He's a genius. He's smarter than, than I am, and so, you know. Well, he had to learn. Could you learn? Sure. If you wanted to, see? This is step one, you're clear. Where was I? Focus somewhere. If you allow something else to come in, yep, take presence, blurt answer. If you, if you want, I'm on bottom paragraph, page 6. "If you want to get rid of something today, you must focus, dwell on what you want, not how to get it, just what. It is the introduction of light that dispels darkness, not the dwelling on darkness that introduces light. If you want more business, better relations between employer and employee, or a better job, get your desire in mind. Focus on it. And then determine the exposure time needed to accomplish the task." You determine the exposure time needed. Exposure time is a function of light and what you want, the depth of feel and all that that you want in the picture. So if you have a picture that is very deep and you want all the details, then you're, it's exposed longer to get more details. If you take a, if the aperture's open very quickly, you might get a flat picture. Not as much detail all the way to the background. So the depth of the picture and the amount of light determines how long that lens is open, or aperture, I guess it's called, is open. So in your life, you may have a picture that's very deep, which means it will take some time for that entire picture, for all of those aspects of the picture to reach the film, you know, the light bouncing off it and coming to the film. It may take some time for that being open. Or you don't have much light yet, especially the light of the Word. See, you don't, you're just, your believing is not really there yet. It's kind of at a low level. It needs to be built more. You need to have more confidence of that happening in your mind. So it's going to take longer because you're not really ready to just go walk up to this person and say, "I want to start a business, and I want you to do this, that, or the other." So you're not quite there, so you need a little more time, or, or you're not ready to walk over to drive, fly into MGM Studios yet, Frankie, and go, "Okay, Mr., I want to talk to Mr. MGM. Where is he?" Maybe you're just not ready for it. So it's going to take you more time to get there. You understand? You need the light, especially of the Word, to build that confidence in your life. And how detailed the picture is affects the exposure time. But you set the exposure time. If it's a year from now, write that down. In one year, I will have X, Y, Z. Two years, I will have X, Y, Z. 30 days, 60 days, whatever period of time you determine. See? Now, if you want to be President of the United States, you're going to need more time. You couldn't say, "I'm going to be President tomorrow." Why? Because there already is one. You could be President in your mind tomorrow. That's right.
You may be President of Iraq.
Yeah, you could be literally President of Iraq tomorrow. Okay. What's left of it? There's a lot left to it. Maybe Afghanistan would be easier.
Maybe.
Because we flattened it. Okay. Where was I? Ah, no, 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 terminology makes sense. Okay. All right. Now you're finally, you just got caught up with us with the next big paragraph, and you'll be caught up. "If you want to get out of your prisons today, immediately change your thinking about your situation. Change your what class?"
Baking.
Well, next thing, nope. Change your subject. Subject. It doesn't say object because sometimes you can't change the object. See, if you're literally in jail, you're in jail. But you can change your subject of focus. If you have a physical situation right now, then you have it. But you can change your subject of focus. You can change what you're focusing on. If something else is going, okay, you know, if you want to be whatever it is, you might not be that right now in fact, as an object. But you can still picture yourself being that, can't you? Sure you can. You have control of your mind. One of the most positive guys you ever want to meet was this guy Bernie Siegel. I think his name was Bernie Siegel, Dr. Bernie Sieg. Or no, that's, maybe that's the other guy. There's a Siegel anyway. This particular, Bernie may be the guy with the wacko. Is that the wacko? With the past-life stuff crap?
No.
Oh, okay. Well, this, maybe this was Bernie. I just call him Burn. Anyway, Burn was in concentration camp with Hitler. Not with Hitler, but with Hitler's minions. And it was rough in there. But he decided, he decided, in concentration camp, with his family being gassed and other people around him, friends, et cetera, going away to the chambers and not coming back, he decided to remain positive and to see himself being back home, safe. And this guy stayed positive in a prison camp. You would think you'd have every excuse to be negative, depressed, really bummed out, right? You know, you see your best friend today, he gets the call, "Okay, we're going to go and..." "It's a little cold in this camp, right? We're going to put you in a place where you can warm up a little." You know? The ovens of Auschwitz and Dachau, I forget which one had the ovens. Did they both have the ovens? Auschwitz and Dachau both? Did they both have the gas chambers too? So, you know, you're going to take a shower, and you, that's the last thought you have. Yeah, it's a gas shower, see? Depressing, right? You'd think. But this guy decided to stay positive. He realized there was only one thing he could control in that situation. What was it? His mind. You and I are not about to go into the gas chambers or the ovens. The only time we go to the oven is to pull a pie out, there's some ribs or something. Couldn't we be positive?
Sure.
Couldn't we keep in our minds what we want? Because see, if it's really what you want, it makes you smile just thinking about it. It automatically lifts you up. If it's really what you want, if it's what will make you blessed, what you want, picturing that brings you to your happy place. They talk about psychology, see? But they just have you out in the field doing something, I don't know. This is happier because you're actually getting something, doing something, being something, see? If you want to get out of your prisons today, immediately, right now, change your subject of focus. This is why in the morning, we picture people happy, blessed, smiling, successful. Because even if it's someone who's going through a rough time, does it benefit? Does it make you feel better if you're bummed because they're bummed? See, it doesn't help you, it doesn't help them either. Now, moms, I'm going to pick on you for a second. When you say, "Oh, I was so worried about you." That sounds good. See, in our culture, we think, "Oh, I know, you know, oh gee, she's a mother, she's worried." Does being worried help the person you're worried about? No. I had to break my mom of this. "Oh, I had a, last night I woke, I had a dream, I dreamed, I just called because I'm worried." I said, "Well, don't. Don't worry about me."
I think that's just the human nature of a mother.
It is. But it's not, but not all human nature is beneficial. Love, yes. Worry, no. Concern, yes. Worry, no. See, there's a difference, and everyone knows the difference. "I was concerned," okay? Well, if you're concerned about me, then picture me being completely blessed and happy and delivered, and pray for me with that picture in your mind. Because if you see me being down and out, you're helping me get there. If your picture of me is depressing, that cannot possibly help. You know what you're doing? You're putting out negative, if you want to use the word energy, it's used too much, but you're putting out a negative toward me because you are picturing me, you now are taking your brain, and you're picturing me in a bad state. And that cannot possibly help me. Even if I'm in a bad state. You know what you've got to do? You've got to see me in a good state. Now, you, it's not that you, you don't see, physically see that I'm in a... Remember the object? Remember the difference between the object and the subject? It's not that, okay, my arm is cut, my hand is cut. Okay, you can see that with your physical eyes. But what you've got to do is picture me being all healed up again, and then you take action towards that picture. See it? Whatever you can do. Maybe there's nothing you can do, but call 911. But you're calling 911 because you don't want me to stay there. You want me to be healed, right? Better, healthy. Boy, this is really something. And it's a challenge. It's work with the mind to picture people the way you want them to be, not the way they are. In marriages, if I picture Evelyn, you know, this is where married couples say things like, "You always do that." So then they always do, even when they stop. Why? Because that's the way you see them. Even if the object changes, you still have the same subject. Isn't that wild? It really is. If I say to Evelyn, "You always do that," what if she stopped really doing that? Or you ask someone a question, and they start to give you a rationalization, when all you did was ask them a yes or no question? Did you, Chuck, did you take the trash out this morning? Well, you know, okay, here's what happened. And you start hearing this, it's a yes or no question. I don't have anything behind that, other than if you did, then I'm going to go ahead and take it out right now because we get the garbage man's coming, see? But what do we, right? We do that kind of thing. Because what's our subject? The subject that we're carrying right now is, "I'm not doing the best," or, "Oh, gosh, I keep forgetting that," or some other negative dumb thing. When it's a simple yes or no question. It's the subject. Immediately change your thinking. As you change your thinking, you will draw a mental pattern for the things you do want in your life, which in turn will dispel and root out those things you do not want. Root out. Root out. You understand the difference between just clip off the top and root out? Big difference. Certain things have to be rooted out, or they'll keep growing. Chuck and I talked about this. You have to get to that root system. Otherwise, it lies dormant for a while, gets a little water, and then it pops right back up. And you're like, "Man, I keep screwing up with this." The root's still there. The root of the thinking, the depth of the thinking, it's going all over the place. It's there. What gets it out? Worrying about it. Nope. Focusing on the negative. Nope. Thinking about how bad you are. Nope. Thinking about how you just keep trying and it never works. Nope. You have to root it out by thinking about what you do want in your life. You may say, "Well, that's not an easy thing to do, but I'm going to try it." "Well, I already know you're not going to make it." You say that? "Okay, girl, that sounds good, you know, I don't really believe it, but I'm going to try it." Don't even try. I can tell you right now, it's not going to work for you. "With God's help, according to His Word, I'm going to get out of this prison. However, if within half an hour, you have forgotten to keep your thinking changed..." Gang, I don't care if this takes you years to get it, so what? Take the years and get it. It took me years on some of these. I read this right now, and I remember working on things and going, "Okay, I've got to keep my thinking changed." And then sure enough for me, half an hour later, I was back thinking the same old dumb thing. And I knew better. I'm reading this going, "If within half an hour, you've forgotten to keep your thinking changed." "Okay, I'm going to keep my thinking changed. I'm going to keep my thinking changed." Half an hour later, or less, I was already thinking the same thing I was thinking before. For other people, you know, right after they walk out the door, they hear all this great stuff, and they're like, "Man, I'm going to accomplish every... I'm, that's right, I, I can do it, I'm excited." And then they walk out the door, they get a call on the cell phone. Hello? Yeah? Yeah, this is your, "Oh, really? Oh gee, no kidding. How'd that happen? Oh gee, really? Well, I could be there probably 10 minutes, and then it's over. It's gone, like that. It's over. Next time you remember something about it, it'll be the next time you come to fellowship." So I'll go, "So, how'd you do on keeping your thinking changed?"
I tried.
Yeah, or a song. You get in your car and you hear a song, you know? "You can't always get what you want."
But if you try.
"But if you try sometime, you just might find, you know, what is that?" And so now you're singing that song and you're like, "Yeah, that's right." That's really right. You can't always get what you want. Mick Jagger certainly knows more than Garland. But since I read it from the Word, you know, you're really saying Mick Jagger knows more than God. And for some reason, I think that's not really right. I think God knows more than Mick, maybe even more than Elvis. I wanna let you on a secret. I sing better than Elvis. 'Cause Elvis is deaf. He really is. I know, I know what you're hearing. He's really left the building, but good. Okay. However, while Elvis was alive, he was the better singer. No question about that, is there? All right. You fall back and if you keep thinking, you've forgotten to keep your thinking changed. You've forgotten, forgotten, forgotten. So we gotta do something about forgetting. And one of the things we do about it, you got those little cards, Chuck? Show them one of those little cards. You can make up these little cards.
By scripture verses?
Hold one up.
Well, these are reprimand.
Yeah, yeah.
These are reprimand cards from, uh, yeah, these are scripture verses. And they have a key that goes with it.
Yeah. Let's say you have a problem with bitterness. There's a little thing for bitterness, and there's a scripture to help you not be bitter. So when you're starting to get your thinking back to the negative, you can, wait a minute, you can pull that card out, see? One of the things you can do about your picture that people have done successfully, successfully for years, write on a little piece of paper what it is you want and put it in your pocket. I don't know what women would do. Men put it in their pocket, 'cause men, you, at the end of the day, at least at the end of the day, you go through your pockets and you pull your stuff out and put it somewhere. And then at the beginning of the day, you take your stuff and you put it back in your pocket. So I don't know about women, 'cause, yeah, I guess you'd put it in your purse, but you'd never find it. You'd never find it again. You can put it on your car, in your sun visor of your car.
You tape it to your mirror.
You could tape it to your mirror.
Fridge. Put it on your windshield wipers.
On the fridge? Windshield wipers?
Do you want it?
See, they can't see this. It's just all on tape, you know, they're gonna go, "What?"
They gotta be here.
That's it. All right. So we wanna work on that. How not to forget to keep your thinking changed. And you fall back into your old negative rut, you will be back living the same way you were before. Then don't wonder why you can't get an answer to prayer. Why you cannot tap these resources. Why the answer is not flowing as easily for you as it is for others. Why you cannot have your release. The answer is that you only momentarily changed your mental image. You did not keep your picture in focus. And I know people, I always share with Frankie, and allow proper exposure time. I'll share with Frankie, someone I know and love very dearly, who time and time again has been in ventures with me and businesses with me, and just about the time it takes off, just before it takes off, they give up. Something, I think, oh, maybe one time they didn't. So I'm like, "Okay, hey, look, you should know that..." But they, just, they don't keep their picture in focus long enough. We've been guilty of that too at times, right? You wanted it, you wanted a certain car, you wanted a certain house, you wanted a certain, 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 whatever it was, but you just didn't keep your picture in focus long enough. And so you gave up and you go, "Well, I guess, here's what we do, you know, we Christians do this." We go, "I guess God just didn't want me to have it." Baloney. That's a cop-out. I told you I was gonna beat you up a little bit. That's a cop-out. It wasn't God keeping it from you. Well, that other person got it, and I guess they were just born under a lucky star. No. You know what they did? They kept their picture in focus long enough. It's true of actors, it's true of singers, it's true of multimillionaires, millionaires, it's true of any category in life that takes some time to develop. You gotta keep that picture in focus long enough. You see yourself being whatever it is. I wish you'd get Evelyn that book, Unstoppable, and find one of the records that you would know of someone who did that, one of the ones who specifically did that, and we'll read that little record. You know where the book is. It's right up top up in the loft area. I think at least that's where I last saw it. It's a tremendous book. It's called Unstoppable, and it's stories of people that were unstoppable. They had whatever it is they wanted, and they kept it in focus until they got it, but, uh, maybe Evelyn could pick one specific.
Sometimes what we think is so important that what we want right now, a month from now, we say, "Gee, no, I really didn't want, I don't want that new car." So focus changes to different things.
Yes, you're absolutely right. If your focus changes, you're not gonna get a clear picture of what it was you focused on in the first place. You're absolutely right. Though why the focus changes sometimes becomes an issue. See, if it's a new car, what's one of the reasons you might not, there could be several reasons. But if the reason is, "Well, that's a lot of money." No, you're already dealing with limitations instead of with what you want. You know the bad thing about changing your focus and not getting what you want? You train yourself to not get what you want.
But that's again, with Betty saying, that's again changing the object, not necessarily the subject.
Okay, good point.
You still may want a new car, but you may not want that new car.
Okay, that's tremendous. That's tremendous, absolutely. You may change from a Honda to a this, no problem. To a, you know, to a Honda. And you go, "You know, I like Hondas better." Absolutely. And it doesn't have to be, you know, you may have a reason you don't want a new car. 'Cause it's like, "I don't wanna take, I don't like the idea of losing twenty to twenty-five percent or whatever, fifteen to twenty-five percent the day you drive it off the lot. I don't like that idea. So I want a pre-owned car, but I want a nice pre-owned." No problem with that. But it's when you start going, "You know what? Just something to get around would be enough." If you're settling, that's not a good practice. Better to keep, something to get around right now could be tremendous. But boy, keep that picture in focus until you get it. So that you develop the habit of believing God for specific things and getting them. That builds strength and confidence in your life. You start to realize, just like someone taking a picture, go back to the picture. The professional takes a lot of pictures. They work it, work it, work it, until they know that they can get a good, that they can take a very good picture. That's what we should know as God's kids. That we can get out of any prison completely and totally. That we can have whatever we want that agrees with what God says. I'm not saying rob a bank, 'cause God's not gonna back that play, right? God's not gonna back you hurting someone. I'm not talking about, you know I'm not talking about that, don't you? I'm not talking about stuff that's against what God has to say. I'm talking about stuff that's in line with what God says. And what God says is so massive and so big about you, that man, it's just wonderful. That's what I'm talking about. Get used to getting what you want. What? You can't have what you want and other people can, and you're a child of God? Well, then what good is it being a child of God? Here's what they say. So that you go to heaven, where God's gonna do all this stuff for you. Betty, if God can't do anything for me now, how do I know he's gonna do anything for me in heaven? Right? Think about it.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Yeah. It's like you work a job. And they tell you, "We've got this great retirement plan. Don't worry." But your paycheck is always late. How much confidence are you gonna have in that retirement plan? Where they don't pay you at all. "Don't worry, we put that check towards your retirement." But that's what preachers are telling us every day. Ministers, priests, teachers, suffer and struggle now, and it's gonna be wonderful in the future. That's a bunch of baloney. It's gonna be wonderful in the future, but it's supposed to be wonderful right now too. Jesus Christ said he came that we might have life and have it how? Lousy? More than abundant, right? No, that's what he came for. Well, why shouldn't we have it? Why someone else and not us, right? What are they, "Oh, 'cause they're prettier, they're smarter, they're taller, they're shorter, they're younger, they're older, they're wiser, they're stupid." I'm like, "What? Pick anything you want if you want an excuse. Get in the habit." That's why I, I share with some of our young people. They say to me, "I don't know what I want yet." I say, "Look, want something and go get it." Yeah, pick something. I use the kid in the candy store analogy sometimes. You know, you tell it, you give a kid five bucks and you say, "Okay, go get whatever you want." What does the kid do? He comes out, he spent every dime, until he starts to, you know, as long as he thinks you're gonna give him more money, he'll spend every dime buying candy. But here's what happens to us adults. We give an adult a thousand dollars, you know, and say, "Go pick," and they go, "Boy, I just couldn't decide." What has happened to us? What is wrong with us? What do you mean you couldn't decide? You didn't want any? Why? Because we think, "I couldn't decide," 'cause we go, "This might be the last thousand I have for a while." And you've got God almighty as your father, and he couldn't loan you some money? He couldn't help you out a little bit here and there? We just don't believe that. It sounds good and we go, "Yeah, yeah, yeah." But then we go back to the grind. I'm here to tell you, God loves you and he can do stuff for you in the here and now that's physical. And he will, if we allow him to do it. And we allow it by changing our minds to think in terms of what we want according to his Word. You got it? Which one? Is it two different ones possibly?
No, from rolling dough to rolling a dough.
Great. Would you read it, please?
Tom Muhannad has had at least a hundred excuses for failing a business from...
Is that all the way up? Go ahead. Go ahead.
From growing up in orphanages and detention homes to starting a business with no business sense, expanding too soon, going broke, losing everything, building it back up and almost losing it again. But what's incredible about Tom Muhannad is that he's never used any excuse. The way he sees it, you haven't failed until you flat out given up. His business story begins when he was a college student in nineteen sixty. Tom and his brother Jim borrowed nine hundred dollars and opened a pizza parlor near the campus of Eastern Michigan University in Yislu...
Iceland. Is it Iceland?
Yislu, uh, Michigan.
Ypsilanti.
Ypsilanti, Michigan. As long as classes were in session, the pizza parlor did fine. When school ended, business dropped seventy-five percent. Through the summer, Tom practically lived at the shop, performing every task himself, making the sauce and fresh dough daily, preparing the vegetables and meat toppings, dicing cheese for what seemed like hours on end. Jim, on the other hand, had a secure job at the post office and less time to devote to the business. When things looked the worst, the partnership began to crumble. And Jim sold his half of the business to Tom in exchange for a nineteen fifty-nine Volkswagen Beetle. The brothers had, the brothers had used as a delivery car. It was a setback, Tom admitted, but I remained optimistic. I knew that the success of my business was solely mine, and I welcomed it. Tom would have liked to stay in school, but now, as sole owner, that wasn't an option. With dreams of expansion, he found a man who had run his own pizzeria and had been the first to ever offer free home delivery eagerly. Tom offered him a job, but the man would take nothing less than an equal partnership with a buy-in of five hundred dollars. Reluctantly, Tom accepted. Tom and his new partner opened two stores that fall, and by January, added a full-service restaurant. The only problem was that Tom still hadn't seen his partner's five hundred dollars and everything was still in Tom's name because of his new partner's past bankruptcy. While Tom worked hun- one hundred hours a week, drove a rusted-out Ramblin' and occasionally cashed his one hundred and twenty-five dollar weekly paycheck, his partner went on spending spree, purchasing cars, property, making lavish improvements to his house. Despite warnings from Tom's friends that the partner was taking advantage of him, Tom felt his partner's past experience was an asset that he needed. Tom continued to focus on expanding the business. "I believed I wouldn't get hurt if I played it fairly," he said. Couple of years later, when his partner landed in the hospital and asked to dissolve the partnership, Tom still decided trust was the best business decision. The partnership was so entangled, Tom's lawyer recommended that Tom declare bankruptcy and start over again. Tom adamantly opposed bankruptcy and instead paid his partner twenty thousand dollars for his share of the business. Tom knew full well that if his partner ever got into debt again, it would be in his name. Tom wished him well, hoping he'd stay healthy and be able to pay his debt, and went back to working, to making pizza. Tom's goal was to be the number one pizzeria and build a reputation for making the best pizza in Yislu...
Ypsilanti.
Yeah.